Good evening. It's now 5:01 in the regular session of the Planning Commission. The City of Lancaster will please come to order. Tonight, our invocation is going to be offered by Pastor Baumkai, I guess it is. I'm not sure. I'm sorry if I mispronounce it. Is he here? Apparently not. Well, then Vice Chair Hall will offer the invocation. And our pledge, then, will be led by Ethan Morris, who's a Boy Scout, who will join us at the podium after the invocation. Please stand.
Will you bow your head as I pray, in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. God of all creation, we come before you to give you honor and praise. You are truly worthy of honor and praise. You are the source of all that is good. You are the source of all our blessings. Thank you for every gift that we have been given. We thank you for the opportunity to come together today. We ask for your hand of blessing on this meeting. We ask that you would guide and direct our meeting so that it is full of wisdom, productivity, and respect for one another. Thank you for helping us accomplish our work and our goals today. Thank you for our first responders, soldiers, and leaders that do their jobs so we are safe, in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Thank you. Ethan? Come right up to the podium and lead the salute. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You have the roll call, please.
Commissioners, Diana Cook, present.
Present.
Cassandra Harvey.
Present.
Drew Mercy.
Here.
King Moore.
Present.
Sandy Smith, absent. Vice Chair Andy Hall.
Here.
Chairman James Vos.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Public business from the floor. If anyone has, would like to speak on any item tonight, we ask you to fill out a speaker's card, which you'll find at the rear of the chamber, and give them to Assistant City Attorney Ms. Corbett. And when the item is called, we'll call upon you. Just to give you a little background, for those of you who've not attended our Planning Commission meeting, typically, our agendas on our public hearings, we give the applicant and/or their representatives an opportunity to present their case after staff gives us a briefing. And then, after that, we'll call on speakers who may have comments relative to that particular case, and then the applicant would have an opportunity to rebut if they choose to. This commission meets generally the week prior to this meeting. In open session, however, it's a staff meeting where we take input from city staff. We may ask our individual questions. However, we do not deliberate, nor do we vote. We gather input. So, when an item is called, you might wonder, gee, they didn't ask a lot of questions. Well, that's probably because we may have had all of our questions asked and answered previously. However, these public hearings are open, and quite often, new information is offered to us. And staff then has an opportunity to respond, as well as the commission. Tonight, the first item is on our agenda is approval of the minutes of our regular meeting of February 26, 2018. May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve the minutes.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Anything further? Please vote.
Motion passes 5:01 with one abstention.
All right. All right. The next items are public hearings, and if there's no objection, we're going to take item three out of sequence and consider it first, and then we'll take up item two. That's all right?
Three, four, then two?
All right. Three and four, and then two. If that's all right with everyone? Mr. Mercy has a flight to catch this evening. For some reason, he's obliged to work periodically, so we do tend to accommodate your needs. All right. So, without objection, then, the public hearing is open on conditional use permit number 1801. Do we have speakers on this item?
Yes, we do. There's one speaker.
All right. Thank you. May we have a brief staff report, then, please?
Good evening, Chairman Vos and members of the Planning Commission. The item before you is conditional use permit 1801. A request for a Type 141 ABC license for on-sale beer and wine for Blaze Fast-Fired Pizza. The subject property is located at 1037 West Avenue K within the commercial zoning designation. Blaze Fast-Fired Pizza would be operating within a 2,500-square-foot tenant space and outdoor patio. It will serve food at all hours the establishment is open for business. The hours of operations would be 10:30 a.m. to 12 a.m., and the hours for the proposed sale of beer and wine would be the same time as the restaurant operating hours. The Lancaster Sheriff's Station staff does not oppose the request of the issuance of an ABC license at this location. A notice of public hearing was mailed to all property owners within a 500-foot radius of the project. Posted on the subject property, noticed in the newspaper, staff has not received any opposition. Staff recommends that Planning Commission adopt Resolution 1806, approving CUP 18-01, a request for a Type 41 license for Blaze Fast-Fired Pizza located at 1037 West Avenue K. That concludes staff's presentation. Staff and the applicant are available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McGunyon. Any questions or comments from the members? All right. Do we have speakers, please?
Roger Schaefer.
Mr. Schaefer, welcome.
I'm going to keep this one short, because I'm going to speak on everything. I just want to remind all the commissioners and you that this is another alcohol place. And we watch our alcohol in this town. And I saw where it is. It's down there. We've got plenty of alcohol down there on K and 10th. I saw it coming over here today. And I don't have anything against it. I'm not against it, or I'm not for it. But I want everybody to be treated equally. So, if they remember this, if we give them a wine and beer permit, then remember when these people get attacked in other wine places. I went back and did a study here for the last six months on y'all, because I'm wanting to learn government nowadays. So, I've seen a few attacks on mostly the little liquor stores and grocery markets, you know, for the beer and wine. But I just want to make sure everybody's treated fairly, equally. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Do you have any other speakers?
There are none.
None? All right. Thank you. So then, without objection, the public hearing is closed. And we'll consider a motion on this application.
I move that we adopt Resolution number 18-06, approving CUP number 18-01.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Anything further? Please vote. Thank you. Next item is also a public hearing on a two-year extension for tentative tract map number So, the public hearing is open on this item. Do we have speakers on this item?
Yes, we do. We have one speaker and one for an applicant.
All right. May we have a brief staff report, then, please?
This item before you is a request for a two-year extension for tentative tract map number 67239. It is a subdivision for a 49th single-family locked subdivision in the SRR zone. It is located on the northwest corner of 35th Street West and Avenue M8. Staff has added condition for the first check of the final map to be submitted at least 180 days prior to the expiration of the date. In conclusion, staff recommends that Planning Commission grant a two-year extension to February 19, 2020, based on the findings contained in the staff report, and subject to the conditions list attachment to Resolution number 0804.
So, this was originally approved in 2006, 12 years ago, right? Because of various changes in the state law, there were automatic extensions. So, now we have a 12-year-old tract map that the applicant is seeking a two-year approval, which is discretionary on the part of the commission. Is the applicant here?
Yes, they are.
Maybe they'd like to come up and chat with us. Afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Chris Panero. I represent Royal Investors Group. Good evening, Chairman Vos, Vice Chair Hall, Commissioners. Just here to answer any questions you might have regarding our request for a two-year extension on this project.
Looking back at the history and all the paperwork on this file, the same requests for extensions for the same reason. So, basically, market conditions, but according to the application, you folks have engaged an engineer in pursuing a final map?
We're working on it. Yes, sir.
That's not the answer I'm seeking.
Well, we're hoping, again, that the market is turning around right now, and...
So, have you engaged an engineer and are pursuing a final map design?
We already have that in our files, sir.
So, you have a final map ready to submit?
Not ready to submit, sir. We have to bring it up to code. A lot of the plans and technical studies all have to be updated as we move forward with final maps, because, as you know, everything is rather...
So, when do you anticipate submitting a final map?
Well, it'll definitely be six months prior to the expiration of the tentative map.
Definitely, huh?
Right.
I'll hold you to that.
Thank you, sir.
And we have another speaker?
Roger Schaefer.
Mr. Schaefer, welcome back.
Been a long time.
I remember you were here before, though.
Yeah, yeah. I own property on M8. I own property all over the place. But on M8, I wanted to build me a castle over on her property. And I've been trying to build it since 2006. That's 12 years ago. Now, she won't sell it to me for cheap, because she says she's already got tentative tract map already designed and going up there. Now, just a minute. This is a hypothetical. I don't even know this gal. But my question is to the council...
Commission, Mr. ...
Commission, I mess with the council, too. And I'm going to get the one tomorrow, whoever that one is, too. See, I've got too much time on my hands. Anyway, how long do you get to have extensions? I mean, indefinitely?
No, that's not the case.
Oh, it's not the case? Well, you're an old timer.
I'll have staff respond to you, Mr. Schaefer.
Remember, they used to say, do it or get off the pot, you know? Well, I wonder if I told you I had a Chinese investor that wants that 30 acres, and if I can get it for him at a good price, that he'll give me a little kickback, you know? Boy, I just sold you where my heart is. But anyway, the point is...
I'm not sure what that has to do with the item before us, but you go ahead.
No, the point is, you've already answered it. It's just unlimited time. She could go another 10 years, I guess. That's all I have to say.
Actually, the statute is a period of six years, I believe, beyond the initial map. The state legislature adopted automatic extensions three separate times. The fourth one, the city does not qualify for the automatic extensions, so it becomes discretionary again. We have a considerable amount of tentative tract maps that are 10 to 12 years old that come before us with a similar story that you've heard tonight, and we make a determination based on the application. They will eventually expire, as this particular one will, if within six months of the expiration date, they do not submit a complete and final tract map application, including all the appropriate documents to the city engineer. If they fail to do that, the project dies. And there are thousands of tentative tract maps within this city's jurisdiction that are in a similar condition. So, the likelihood of all of them, or even part of them, ever filing a final map is probably slim and none, but that's just my editorial comment. All right. Do we have any other speakers?
There are none for this item.
Ms. Carroll, do you care to rebut? No? All right. So, without objection, we'll close the public hearing. Consider a motion.
I move to grant a two-year extension to February 19, 2020, based on the findings contained in the staff report, and subject to the conditions list attachment to Resolution number 08-04.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Anything further?
Motion passes 6:0.
Thank you. All right. The next item will be...
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
I'm recusing myself on item number two due to an unrelated business relationship with one of the known individuals. And since I've got a flight, and that's the last item for this evening, I will see you all later. Have a wonderful evening.
Well, you're excused. Have a pleasant flight. So, Mr. Mercy has recused and left the desk. We now still have a quorum with five members?
You do.
All right. So, without objection, we'll open the item on conditional use permit 17-30. Looks like we have a number of speakers. This is your item, Ms. Panera? Please enlighten us.
Good evening, Chairman Vos and members of the Planning Commission. This item before you is conditional use permit 1730. CUP 1730 is a request to allow for the operation of a medical cannabis cultivation facility within an existing building and a waiver for distance requirements. The proposed location is at 42144 H Street East, on the southeast corner of East Avenue L-12 and H Street East. The property is within the heavy industrial land use designation and the heavy industrial The building is 18,167 square feet, and 13,212 square feet would be used for cultivation-related activities. The facility would use a negative pressure environment and a carbon filter system for odor filtration to remove unwanted smells. The applicant would establish a waste disposal system by utilizing a company for cannabis waste management solutions. All green waste would be stored within the building. The proposed facility would have security lighting, a 24-hour patrol officer, and real-time monitored camera system. A detailed security plan was submitted, and the city's Public Safety Officer Office deemed it adequate for the proposed use. The proposed project is required a waiver of distance because it is within 600 feet of single-family homes. As you can see here, number one and two are the single-family homes, and in yellow is the proposed project. The two houses adjacent to the project were built prior to 1956 and are considered legal non-conforming uses in buildings. The surrounding properties are zoned heavy industrial, which are for heavy industrial uses in a less restrictive setting. The proposed project complies with HI designation and zoning because it is compatible with adjacent land uses in development. Uses near the site consists of national metal stamping, R&amp;D enterprises, and a self-storage facility. Two findings must be made in order for a waiver to be granted, which are the two on the screen. The proposed project would provide full-time and part-time jobs, providing a viable service to the community by helping with the economic vitality in industrial areas. The facility would not result in an adverse effect because it is located within an existing building. The hours of operations are similar to the adjacent industrial uses, and would be limited to Monday through Friday from 9 to 5 for shipments and deliveries. The proposed project is exempt from SEACRA, and notices were mailed within 500-foot radius. A sign was posted on the subject property and published in the AV Press. Staff has received no opposition. In conclusion, staff recommends that Planning Commission adopt Resolution 1805, approving conditional use permit 1730, subject to the conditions of approval. That concludes staff's presentation. Staff and the applicant are available for any questions.
Thank you. Members, have any questions before we proceed?
I just have one question. So, you mentioned that the homes that are in that area, those two homes that are the topic of discussion, are no longer compliant based on the fact that this is now a heavy industrial zone, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. You know, I have a penchant for not giving waivers generally, so... Okay. Thank you.
And to clarify, you received no opposition from those homeowners or renters of those two homes?
That is correct. We have not received opposition from them.
We have received an uncontested letter, however, from the applicant indicating they agree to all the conditions. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you. All right, then. See what happens when you actually get interested people to come out and visit with us. It's encouraging for us, because more often than not, we seldom have folks attend our meeting. So, the applicant will have an opportunity to present, and then all the speakers as well will have their chance. So, if we could hear from the applicant, please, if they care to come in.
Good evening, Vice Chairman and Vice Chair Hall and Commissioners. I'm Alisa Stewart. I represent PMM Collective. It's a nonprofit mutual benefit corporation that is seeking to do business here in Lancaster to do cultivation of medicinal cannabis. I do have a presentation prepared. I'm also prepared to just answer questions. It's whatever your preference is.
We really have no preference. It's up to you. If you care to present, that's fine. If you don't want to, that's okay, too.
I think that it's been well presented by the associate planner. I'm happy. I'll deal with the rebuttal if there's any issues that come up.
All right. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have speakers?
David Paul.
Mr. Paul, welcome.
Chair Vos, Vice Chair Hall, Commissioners, good evening. You know, I rise in support of this Measure 1730, and I applaud this commission and this city for their continued foresight and vision. It wasn't very long ago that I talked about this to council, and I remember one councilman wanted a double-blind study, peer-reviewed. Now, there's dozens of these things. Marijuana is medicine, and if done right, it helps people tremendously. And in light of this opioid epidemic, it could do a lot of good to help people get off of that. There are other medical uses. And I can tell you, after 25 years of throwing guys out of taverns for bad behavior, marijuana is the least harmful mood-altering substance that people use. So, it's real medicine, and I applaud you. The city needs the revenue. We have doctors now in the audience that are saying, yes, this is good. And I love it. I love the future. I love the direction, and I love the courage. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Have another speaker, please?
Michael Rivas.
Mr. Rivas, welcome.
Hi. It's Michael Reeves. Okay. Commissioners, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chair, staff, ladies and gentlemen. I oppose any cannabis in the City of Lancaster at all, whether it's sold in retail or manufactured. And let me give you my reasons and reasons for opposing this project. Number one, cannabis is a drug, and I worked at the VA Hospital with cancer patients for 13 years, and I know a lot of patients that took drugs, and they had to take hardcore drugs. Marijuana didn't help them. Persons using cannabis should be monitored by a physician like any drug. Patients, sometimes, as I mentioned, still need stronger drugs. Number two, when these facilities were considered by the city council, my understanding, they were going to be confined to a certain part of town. Its current facility is near residents, even though you didn't get any comments from the people. I would have liked to seen a map up there showing how close it's going to be to homes. The current facility is far apart from other such facilities, and again, I thought the facilities were going to be out near the airport. My third point is that we're going to give this city a bad name. We're going to be a cannabis or marijuana manufacturing city. These manufacturers are going to use water and electricity, particularly water, which we're going to be short of in the future. Finally, there'll be a time when they come up before the Planning Commission and the city council and want to have retail outlets in the city, which I definitely oppose. I think that before the commission approves this, we need to step back, examine where these manufacturers are located, see if we can confine them, if we want them, in a certain area, as far away from people as possible. But in my opinion, you should not approve any of them at all. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Do you have other speakers?
Brian Glidden.
Mr. Gordon? Good evening. Welcome.
Good evening, Chairman Vos, Vice Chair Hall, Commissioners, and city staff. Thank you for this opportunity. We several times have brought up the residents that are nearby this facility, and on March We several times have brought up the residents that are nearby this facility and on March 8th, I think it was, we participated in public outreach and we talked to the neighbor to the north. And when we did, that neighbor actually signed a non-objection letter that we provided to the city, so you guys should have that in your packet. We also tried to contact the owner to the west and there was a renter there. They gave us some information and then we did an internet search and we were able to locate the owner. And the owner told us that he was not an objection to the project, but he was not willing to actually sign anything, but he was not against the project. So that letter, I put together everything that was said and myself and Raj that were there talking to him on the phone, we both signed in certification of what was said. So both homeowners were not against the project, so they didn't object to the project. Any questions or did you guys see those letters?
No, it's okay, thank you.
Okay. Any questions at all?
We may have some, yeah.
Okay, thank you. I do have copies of those letters if you want me to circulate.
Thank you. Another speaker, please. Ms. McDonald, welcome. Nice to see you.
Nice to see you, too, Mr. Bose. Chairman Bose, Vice Chair, and all the rest of Commissioners and City Staff, I appreciate being here tonight. It was short notice because when I saw the paper, I had, I just had to be here. I want to let you know that I am totally agreeing with this plan. I think it's a good idea. I've always been an advocate for medicinal marijuana. I do understand, too, that the marijuana is not going to be sold here. We're actually like, it's being made here, cultivated here, and sent somewhere else. So I'm fine with that and I think that, like David Paul was saying, the opiate addiction is getting way out of control and I think that alcoholism, as well as a bunch of other different things and addictions that are going on, this is something that actually even helps kids when you use the oil and things like that for them to have seizures. So I'm going to, I'm going to continue to be an advocate for it. I don't use it myself, but I do know and know people and seen the results when people, they're actually leaving opiates alone for this purpose. So I just wanted to put my two cents in and let you guys know that I do approve and I do appreciate everything that you do. And I apologize for not being at more meetings, but I'm like jam-packed with other meetings I have to be at, so I apologize for that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Have other speakers?
Roger Schaefer.
Mr. Schaefer, welcome back.
Well, that's, I just learned something from Shannon. I didn't know it wasn't going to be sold here. But anyway, let me get to the point. This is a simple one. I look at our federal government as our grandfather, our state government as our dad. You guys are my brothers and sisters. Our grandpa still doesn't agree with this marijuana thing. Now, I have a personal friend that takes the medicinal marijuana for their kid and it keeps him from having seizures. Now, I'm all for that, but they don't have any trouble getting that for their son. So I don't know why. I was really come to argue with Mike because I knew what way he was going to pick and I thought, and I argue with anybody on anything. I argue with myself in the paper. You know, I'll pick the opposite side of what I say as a ghostwriter, you know. Anyway, how can we? Boy, I'm losing my track of thought here, you guys. And another thing is I don't acknowledge you guys because that's just a waste of my hours. I don't have many hours up here. But don't take it as disrespect, you know. And I won't praise you like David Paul does. He always praises everybody, goes to the council meeting and praises them. But anyway, back to the marijuana thing. I want to know if this is this medicinal marijuana or if it's for the druggies that I used to work on my construction crews. And this is not the old marijuana back in my days that Mexicans brought in. This is, this is stuff that'd knock you down. Anyway, but I'm a fiscal hawk. I like making money and capitalism. And if we're going to make money on it, I'd like you guys to tell me how we're going to make money on it. And that's all, I guess. You know what? I didn't bring my cards with me. I give you guys all papers and I didn't bring my own. But I brought one, I stole one of yours for the non-agendaist thing, so I know what I'm talking about.
All right, thank you.
And I came to see King Moore because I never, King Solomon is the last guy I remember and I wanted to see what a king, I never heard of that first name again.
Well, I'll tell you another King story. My great-grandfather's name was King Fisher.
Really?
Really. Small world, isn't it?
Wow, really? That's cool.
And the reason I know that is because I was looking at my mom's birth certificate. She passed away a week ago Tuesday at 95-plus and I was going back through all the family records and came across her birth certificate and there was, there was her father's name. She was born in Moose Jaw, Saskatchewan, October 27th, 1922. And we in the family referred to her as a tough old bird. Anybody that lives to be 95 is pretty tough. And I will also pontificate a bit about the medical care in our community has nothing to do with this application. But what I will say is that the care she received from the medical community in our here was excellent. And at the end, ProCare Hospice, which most of us know about, treated her with respect and dignity to the very end. So, any other speakers?
Sarah May.
Ms. May. Good afternoon.
Good evening. How are you? So my name is Sarah May. I'm a health educator at Tarzana Treatment Centers. I also represent Antelope Valley Marijuana, Alcohol, and Pharmaceutical Prevention Coalition. Our coalition works to limit use access to drugs and alcohol in the Antelope Valley. I am here today to voice our concern about the proposed conditional use permits for medical marijuana cannabis cultivation in Lancaster. As we have seen in the rise of levels of prescription drug abuse in our country, a permissive state, city, and community attitude towards a drug, even one that is legal for consumption by some of the population, leads to an increased acceptability and level of use among youth. Likewise, decriminalization has led to an increase in youth marijuana acceptance and use. When compared to their peers in other states in 2012 through 2013, a study funded by the National Institute on Drug Abuse found that 12th graders in California were 25% more likely to have used marijuana in the past 30 days, 20% less likely to perceive regular marijuana use as a great health risk, 20% less likely to strongly disapprove of regular marijuana use, and about 60% more likely to expect to be using marijuana five years in the future. Clearly, societal permissiveness and decriminalization affect youth's views of illicit substances. Tarzana Treatment Center's own data for the Antelope Valley shows that in 2016 cannabis made up 54% of youth admissions for residential treatment and 85% of youth admissions for outpatient treatment. It continues to be the most common drug of choice among youth and in focus groups held last year with community members, we were told repeatedly that cannabis is both socially acceptable and easily accessed by youth within the Antelope Valley. Though billboards, magazines, and social media can increase young people's exposure to medical, to marijuana advertisements, the proliferation of medical marijuana cultivation in dispensary sites also increases adolescents' exposure to the drug. By allowing medical cannabis cultivation and manufacturing to occur in the City of Lancaster, we are concerned that youth might develop skewed perceptions about the legality of cannabis and dismiss the dangers that cannabis, even medical cannabis, poses to their developing brains. We urge the City of, we urge the Planning Commission and the City of Lancaster to consider these risks and we also urge you to consider how allowing medical cannabis to be cultivated in Lancaster might lead to an increase in social acceptance of cannabis with the community and may also lead to easier youth's access to cannabis if the strictest levels of security and regulations on the growth, storage, and removal of medical cannabis from the city for processing and sale are not upheld. Please consider the implications our city could face by issuing the CUP when you vote today. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
That's it.
That's it. All right then. Could we have the site plan up, please? Do you have an aerial of the site? There we go. So the site is currently served by paved roads on two sides. It's in a heavy industrial area. It's been heavy industrial for, before the city was a city, I believe. The property to the west, I'll be polite and call it a storage area. It's walled. There is a single-family home, which apparently is a rental property on the corner. On the north side of ELT-12, is it? ELT-12? Right. There's also a single-family home. Somewhat of a rural nature, right?
Correct.
Okay. So the proposed design recommends a masonry wall around the exterior of the parking lot adjacent to the landscape area?
That's correct. So along the perimeter of the subject site, there is going to be a minimum six-foot-tall
So we've considered other applicants on other properties in heavy industrial zones with tube steel fences, right?
Correct.
As well as masonry walls. Now, the applicant hasn't asked for that, but I just, I'm curious why we want masonry here as opposed to the option or really does it matter?
The wall along the perimeter actually gives a buffer for the residents. We did take that in consideration when we did look at the project.
That's 24-hour security, right?
That is correct.
The applicant has applied for and received conditional approval of the city license for the operation of the proposed facility, which is conditioned upon this commission making a finding in favor.
That's correct.
Okay. We also received and have in file a report from Mr. DeRico's office indicating that the security plan has been reviewed and meets city standards pursuant to the ordinance that supports this project. However, we're not privy, we individually are not privy to that because it's a confidential plan because it is a high level of security. Am I correct?
Yes, that's correct.
We did receive a couple of modifications to the proposed ordinance, which, or some typographical errors, actually, and a clear description of the requirement, or the reason for the waiver. Is there anything else in the modification? That was it, right? That's all there was?
That was it.
On the recommendation. So I recall from the floor plan of the existing facility, there's a portion of the site that has a mezzanine in it or a interior structure that one might describe as a mezzanine. Maybe in the, about the middle. So that's, that's being taken out?
Correct.
So it's all on single, it's all one floor. In other words, the 13,000 square foot and change is the maximum by permit. That'll be the maximum utilization of the site for cultivation and whatever other related Okay? So shall we hear from, we've heard from the applicant who'd like to possibly rebut, so maybe Ms. Stewart, is it?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, welcome back.
I would like-
Anything to add?
Yeah, the only thing I would add is that I heard you say that we would be limited to the 18,000 square feet or the 13,000 square feet. I think the goal would be to try and expand to a full 22,000 square feet canopy at some point within the building itself, not on the mezzanine, but in racks.
You understand if there's any changes to the, to the approval, you'll have to come back before it.
Understood. We would absolutely come back, but that would certainly be our goal. We wouldn't want to be limited. We would like to come back and expand and I just want to put that out there.
For what it's worth, it really has no meaning unless it's in the application.
So, I understand. We've drawn a floor plan that has a certain area of canopy, but I understand that the Lancaster ordinance doesn't require us to request a specific amount of canopy, just so long as we can go to the state and acquire our license at that level as well.
I'm not sure where you're getting your information. The application that you filed is precisely what you are, is before us that we may consider for approval. Any change to that requires you to apply back to this city for an approval process. The state doesn't govern that. We do.
I understand.
Okay?
I understand.
So we're not negotiating anything with you, all right? What's before us is what's before us.
Understood.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, the issue's on water, utilization. Ms. Stewart? I'm sorry. Care to comment on the potential overutilization of water?
So we will be using what's called a closed-loop system and typically, 25 square feet of canopy would use approximately six gallons of water. We would place the plants in an area where all the water can be recaptured and reused until we can't use it anymore. We'll be recycling every bit of water that we can. If we opt to use microturbines and multi-chiller systems, we would also be able to capture the humidity out of the air and use that water as well. So our goal is to reuse and recapture every single drop that we can. It, you know, it is in our benefit to do so as it reduces our costs as well. So that is our plant for water.
Okay. What about the use of electricity, then?
So we're exploring a variety of options around the use of electricity. One would be microturbine generators, which would operate off of natural gas and would reduce our overall expenses and overall use of energy. The other option is that we would be exploring is whether or not we could put in carports most, just like what you have outside with solar energy on top of that. These are options that we're exploring in terms of energy use and of course, we'll be using Lancaster for electricity choices.
Mr. Gordon already commented on the residential aspects of it. How long you been in process with us? Just curious.
Well, I know that I started this process along with one of the owners back in, or one of the board members back in April. And I believe that we filed an application in the summertime and we've been working towards being responsive to what the city is looking for and making sure that we're doing what's right for the nonprofit and what's right for the community. So we've been- So we've been doing a lot of outreach with consultants and a variety of experts on these issues to make sure that we can do what we can to be good partners with the city of Lancaster.
It's not a cheap process. Our filing fees and our licensing fees for this project, ballpark? What would you say that number is?
It's a high number. It is, it's an investment, and I think it shows our commitment to have a business here, and our commitment to the city to be a partner with it. The goal for us is to, you know, cultivate clean cannabis. One of our board members is a doctor. One of our board members is a businessperson. Our goal is to do the best that we can do to create clean cannabis and put it, I understand it won't be sold in this community, but in communities where, you know, there are dispensaries that benefit from medicinal marijuana, to continue our own evolution as to what that means as a medicine for people. I hope that one day, we will have physicians, because the law provides for it and allows them, to prescribe cannabis to their patients who are suffering. My grandfather died of mesothelioma, and if I could have alleviated his pain in any way possible, I would have. So for me, this is personal, and it's also, I think, a movement, but I also know that it's a business. So the goal is to do all of those things here in Lancaster, and to elevate the business for all of us.
All right, thank you. Anything further from the member?
Are you going to be tagging the plants and tracking them?
Sure.
With that inventory type of log? Could you explain that a little bit?
So California requires a seed-to-sale tracking system, and I cannot remember the name of the current one that they want us to go with. It's not the one that you found in our papers. California has chosen another seed-to-sale, but what it does, in essence, is all of this software does, is it's able to tag and trace from the moment you put it in either water or soil or nutrients, however your choice of cultivation is, and trace it all the way to the dispensary and where it goes. And yes, we'll be required to do that by the state of California, but we would do it because it's a good practice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Comment I would have is that this commission doesn't select applicants nor locations. Applicants select the city and choose their locations. This particular location falls within the requirement of our ordinance, that this commission spends a lot of time and a lot of hours making sure that when projects of this type are applied for, they meet the standards of the ordinance and are placed in locations that are less, as, least sensitive as possible compared to other locations. Heavy industrial areas primarily, which this is and has been for years and years.
To address that in small part, I want to address the, we chose this location because we found the building to be suitable for our needs. There's a number of small rooms. It can be set up in almost a clear pathway so that you can have a flow of work, and we chose this location. It was heavy industrial, but the building was specifically helpful, I think, to cultivation. If there is, and I hope there isn't, any sort of mold or pest outbreak, we would be able to contain a room, and that was one of our goals when we were searching for buildings. So that's why we've chosen this location.
The interior structures where the, where the plants are grown, I've personally seen facilities designed a number of different ways. You plan on using metal structures for, like stainless steel, for instance, for your, for your racks and that, your growing areas opposed to wood? Or do you know?
Oh, I would, my own preference would be metal, not wood. Wood absorbs moisture and helps with mold, quite frankly, so metal would be preferable. Our goal is to build a state-of-the-art facility.
All right, very good. Go ahead, Mr. Moore.
My question is, as far as cannabis has a huge odor, distinct odor, and with the, you know, residential right across the street, is, I just want you to go into detail on how are you going to keep that smell or the odor under control?
So the current technology is carbon filtration system within a negative pressure. So you pull as much of the air out of the room as you can, and you choose where you want that air to exit, and it would go through a filter that scrubs it before it leaves the building. And in most situations, you would want to put that filter and fan that's going to exhaust the air into the environment on the ceiling, so that the air is forced up, it goes through the carbon filtration system, it's cleaned and it's released higher up. And of course, staff would monitor. We have security, but we'd also have staff who would monitor if you can smell. What you're smelling is called terpenes, and we would make sure that if we could smell anything, we would have to correct that. The goal is that you would be standing outside our facility and not know it's even there. We don't want to attract attention.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
All right, thank you. Anything further? So without objection, we'll close the public hearing. And consider a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 18-05, approving conditional use permit 17-30 to allow for the operation of an 18,167-square-foot medical cannabis cultivation facility located at 42144, 8th Street, East Lancaster, California.
Second.
Anything further? Please vote.
Oops.
It's not showing on the screen. It's not showing, but I need to have you re-vote.
Chairman Vos, can we clear and revote?
Uh, I don't know. All right. Now I can. We're all doing it again, apparently. I think the problem is, is that you've got, there you go. Now you've got it. Five oh.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, good luck with your project.
Thank you, sir.
That brings us to Ms. De La Cruz. Comments?
I wanted to start off by, again, giving my condolences to your family, from the planning staff and myself. And the other item I wanted to mention, I sent an email yesterday asking for your availability for a special meeting in May. I've heard from some, not from all. We could just circle back. I'm not pointing at anybody, but for those of you that have not responded, if you could just get back to me, I would appreciate it.
Were you looking at me?
Oh, no.
Oh, okay.
You know who you are, those of you who have not responded. And that's all I have for tonight.
Don't want to get in trouble. What date was that, in May?
It was for a special meeting on May 29th.
May 29th, okay.
They've already had to hear my whining, so go ahead.
That's a Tuesday, then, as opposed to the 21st, right?
That's correct.
It's a Tuesday after Memorial Day.
Somebody put it on my calendar, so it must be true. All right, then. Commission comments? All right.
Couple of things.
Go ahead.
One, I was glad to hear that the city council passed the thing to have buying more land out by the Poppy Reserve. I think that that kind of goes to some of the stuff we do and alleviates some of the heartburn we have about putting some of that stuff out there, that it is good to see that there is that. And I'm sorry, Jim, when I heard about your mom tonight, that really struck me too, so my deepest sympathy.
It was time.
Yes.
I say we dedicate this meeting to Ms. Margaret Vos-Peggy.
Yep.
Second that.
Yep. Lived a full life, and it was a blessing. Always is at the end. Even a couple of funny stories at the end. Anyway, so, now comes public business from the floor. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the commission on any non-agendized item. Individuals would have an opportunity to offer their comments, fill out a speaker's card, and you would have three minutes to address us. Do we have speakers?
Yes, we do.
All right, thank you.
Roger Schaefer.
Mr. Schaefer.
I'm going to just take the chair up there. Mike, they didn't-
Welcome back again.
They didn't, they didn't. I never found out how much water they're really going to use. I didn't find out if it was medicinal. I didn't, I'm going to be, next meeting, Mr. Voice, I'm going to be more pointed. I'm not going to be scattered all over the place. And I'm going to ask a question, and if you care not to answer it, you don't have to answer it. But I know this is going to make money for us, and I am a capitalist. I like to make money. And this is just to let you know that I'm going to be hanging around as long as I stay alive. So this is a story of myself. I thought I should explain why I'm coming to your meetings from now on. First, I worked as an independent oil producer in Bakersfield and came to the Antelope Valley in '83, met a man named Greg Anderson, Mr. Rancho Vista Development, Palmdale area. I had a Class A general engineering license, so I started stirring up dirt here in the valley. To the point, I'm a registered Republican, leaning more towards the conservative capitalist libertarian. Libertarians hold five basic beliefs, and I'm not strong on most of them. Therefore, I wonder why I call myself one. Basically, because as individuals, I believe as individuals, we have the right to pursue happiness in any way we want, as long as we do no harm to anyone else. In addition, you must obey the laws of the government and the Constitution of the United States. The trick is doing no harm to others, for what may seem okay to us may seem harmful to others. You know? You've been harmed tonight, on this vote. To me, well, you know the ones that I'm not agreeing on? If you guys look up libertarianism, the ones that I'm kind of on a fence on, social liberals, I canceled that platform, economic conservatives, free market is good, but they advocate getting rid of the IRS, the social security and the income taxes. They haven't proved anything to me on that one, so I didn't join them on that either. And the same with abortion. I'm, I'm one way or the other on that until I find out for sure. I can't remember far back, it's maybe two years old, so I don't know if I was feeling pain at 20 weeks or not. I've got 30 seconds. I was going to ask King Moore a question, but you spoke, so I'm not going to pick on you. But I'm going to go in the castle next week, or maybe tomorrow. I'm going to start picking on guys that are new, because, you know, it's usually the big dog. Paris, and now Voice, they get to, they get to speak. I want to see you guys speak. And you know what I'd like to see? I'd like to see you guys vote, just for the heck of it. You know, just, just vote no, even though you're not for it. You know, make us feel like you're not all in the same club.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. Have another?
We do. Shannon McDonald.
Welcome back, Shannon.
Hi again.
Hello.
I actually just wanted to address, I wish Tarzan was still here, because I would address the fact that, first of all, this has, this has been an issue that's been, that's been addressed the city council, it's been planning commission, this thing has been going on for a while. I mean, I can actually probably safely say a couple of years now, this has been going on, that this has been, this marijuana issue has been on the, on the platform. And I want to, I want to make sure that I'm clear, when I do research, I do really in-depth research on things. And when it was spoken that kids, 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 well, I just, I'm here to tell you, the research that I've done from different countries all over the world says that no one under 25 should be smoking marijuana anyway. No one. People that are older than 25, because they have this cognitive thing, their brains are still developing, and they're not supposed to be smoking marijuana anyway, regardless. You can't smoke until you're 21 anyway. So really, that makes sense to me. The older folks who are going through different medical issues are the ones that are the ones more prone to benefit from it, not the younger folks. I just wanted to make sure that that was clear. I'm sure that everyone in here is, is just as intelligent as myself, you know what I mean? But I just wanted to say that that's, that's something that needs to be really understood, that no one under 25 should be smoking it anyway. And we, there's so many different versions of marijuana. I mean, like I said, when it comes to little kids, I mean, some of the videos I've seen and some of the research I've done, watching these kids have like 300 seizures a week, go down to one when they get some medicinal, when they get the cannabis oil rubbed on their feet, is amazing, because they go down, they go from 300 to one. Like, like, some people didn't even understand tonight. Mr. Schaefer admitted it. He's like, oh, we're not selling it out here. No, we're, we're, we're making it, making the money off of it and sending it elsewhere. I'm fine with that. That's, that's not a problem for me. I don't, I don't, I don't, I'm not going to advocate for recreation. I thought people do, people are going to do what they want to do anyway. But when it comes to me standing up and putting my name on something in a sense, I'm going to always advocate for medicinal marijuana, just because I understand the benefits of it. So I just want to let you guys know, I really appreciate the decision that you made, and I also love the fact, too, that the word "conditional" is in there. You screw up, it's gone. Conditional means conditional. If you don't do what you're supposed to do, you're going to lose it. So I really appreciate everything that you, that you've done, and I appreciate your vote this evening. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. No other speakers? All right. Anything else from members?
Any comments?
Pardon?
Yes, I have one comment. It was just said a moment ago by Mr. Schaefer. First of all, he said that he has studied us for six months, and if he had studied us for six months, he would see that this commission doesn't always, always vote the same way. So just make sure you've done your homework. We don't always vote the same way. There's not always a bunch of yeses or a bunch of nos. Just be clear. And the reason these meetings run this way is because of Robert's Rules of Order. We can't all talk at the same time. There is a process. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, just as a reminder, the December meeting, we had a split vote, three to three, on a conditional use permit for the sale of alcohol, alcoholic beverages, beer and wine in a mini-mart, which the city council heard on appeal and decided to send it back to us, which we will now consider next month. So we're rewinding the watch, if you will, on that entire project. So it's all coming back to us. Right?
That's great, but just to clarify, it's not next month. It's, it's, we're trying to get it on an agenda. We have not confirmed which agenda.
Oh, April or May? Or June? Or sometime?
Sometime this summer.
That's assuming the applicant doesn't withdraw it, right? Okay. They do have that opportunity, though, right? If they chose?
They do.
Okay. Very good. Anything further? Ladies, thank you. Ms. McGonigal, it's okay to use your outside voice? It's, I know, you speak softly. Ms. Campana does too, but she's, she's cranked it up and- Ms. Campana does too, but she's, she's cranked it up a notch.
I forgot to mention, my apologies, is that we have a new face with us, and you'll be seeing more of this face. That's Ms. Joy Reyes. She's caught her off-guard, but she will be helping us with the transition, and you will be seeing more of her.
Not new, just saying.
True.
Ms. Reyes, thank you for saving us. Keep us on the straight and narrow, as you always have. Always. That's right. All right, thank you very much, and thank you all for your work tonight. So, we stand adjourned to our regular, excuse me, special meeting for Monday, April 16, 2018, here in these chambers at 4:30 PM. Thank you.